This meeting will be, will come to order. This is a regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, May 6, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo. No, Councilmember Scambalory.
Here.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Volin.
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Piedmont Smith.
I don't think she's here yet.
She mentioned, she mentioned in the chat that she was having a hard time hearing anything since she relogged on.
Okay, I can see Piedmont Smith, but I cannot hear her. Councilmember Flaherty.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wait, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Oh, all right. We have everyone here. Good. Here is a summation of the agenda for this evening. We will hear reports from council members who have reports in the mayor and city offices. We will hear reports from council committees and we'll hear reports from the public. Maximum of 20 minutes set aside for each part, each for each set of reports. We will entertain appointments to boards and commissions. Legislation for a second reading of resolutions includes Resolution 2006, Denouncing and Condemning White Nationalism and White Supremacy, which has no committee recommendation. And then we will have two items for first reading appropriation ordinance 2002 to specially appropriate from the local income tax special distribution fund, motor vehicle highway fund, motor vehicle highway restricted fund, and cumulative capital development fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. And ordinance 2008, an ordinance to amend ordinance 1921, which fixed salaries for appointed officers, non-union, and ask me employees for all the departments of the city for the year 2020 regarding adding a position in the information and technology services department and changing the title in one position and the grade in another for two divisions within the police department. Finally, we'll follow with an additional 25 minute period of additional public comment. We will consider the council schedule and then adjourn. Let's start with reports from council members. I'm going to start today with a report from the person who I see last on my Zoom tableaus here and then go work backwards to the person who's listed first. So that means we'll start with Councilmember Rallo. Do you have a report?
No, thank you. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report. Thanks.
Okay, we go to Councilmember Flaherty.
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims.
I just want to say today is Nurses Day as part of Nurses Week, and I just want to say Happy Nurses Day to all of our frontline providers, not only this city, but throughout the state and the country.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Scambalory.
Yes, just a thank you to the constituents who attended my constituent first Saturday meeting. Thank you for persevering through Zoom. It seems to be going well. The next meeting is coming up on June 6th, and I look forward to continue discussion on lower cascade in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambalory. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. Just a word that yesterday, of course, was Global Giving Day. And like many of you, I'm sure you got emails, as I did, from a host of great organizations, arts, nonprofit, social services. And in this time when a lot of our social service agencies have not been able to fulfill their fundraising activities due to the physical distancing, there is really great need out there for everyone to step up and to give. Those who can, I hope you were generous with the organizations that you support. I can't support everyone that I got a solicitation from, but I do my best. Also because of our Jack Hopkins deliberations, which we held this week, we did our first round. We have a great amount of need for some of these organizations and we're going to have our work cut out for us to that all fit into our allocations this year. And so everyone's help is appreciated. Again, we know everyone is frightened and a little uncertain as to what the economy is going to look like. But our local nonprofits who do provide services and relief for low-income residents need your help now more than ever. So I hope everyone was generous and there's still time to be so if you have not. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg, and good luck with the Hopkins Social Service Committee this year. It's going to be a doozy. I know it. Is Councilmember Piedmont Smith present?
Yes.
Do you have a report?
I do not. I apologize. I had some technical difficulties in joining the meeting, but I don't have a report.
We can at least hear you now, so thank you. I will just report by acknowledging the events of this week. The governor has announced a five-phase plan for the reopening of the state's economy. Monroe County and Bloomington have demurred. The state does not preclude cities and counties from having more stringent measures. And so Monroe County and Bloomington are choosing to delay reopening a bit longer than the state is is doing as I speak and as I have been meeting with people over the past two months online, been in Lake County, one of the three counties in the state that has been told to not reopen right away along with Marion and Cass counties. So I certainly encourage Monroe and company to stay closed for frankly, as long as possible. But I know that everyone is working hard to figure out what we can do to strike the right balance between public health and the economy that people need to make a living and stay healthy. And I don't envy any empty one of the decisions they have to make at this time. With that, we will go now to reports from the mayor and city offices. Mr. Mayor, I see that you're here. Go ahead.
Can you hear me all right? Can you?
Yes, you're coming loud and clear.
Thanks for the chance to be with you again. I appreciate it. Thanks again to our workforce, the whole city workforce that worked so hard keeping our operations going. We should note it's Drinking Water Week. So maybe a special shout out to all those to operate our Monroe Water Plant that provide drinking water to our whole region, whole county and areas around us safely, even through all these challenges as well as all the other workforce. My family's doing well. Thanks. Just giving you that quick update. We're all on the mend. That's good. Mr. Volin, following up on that, I thought it might be helpful tonight just to give a little update. As you noted, last Friday afternoon, the governor announced for most of the state plans to move from what he calls stage one into stage two and laid out stages three, four, and five and target dates for those based on four criteria that he said he was using at the state level to identify the opportunity to do so, ending up their goal at July 4th, kind of reducing all restrictions. Locally, we have been and will continue to focus on the health and health indicator here to protect our health. As you indicated, the local organizations led by the Health Department, the Health Officer and the, and the Health Department of the county, with the strong support of both the county executive and your mayor, did decide last Friday afternoon after the governor did so that our health indicators do not indicate we are moving in the right direction. Quite specifically, indeed, we do not have a 14-day declining hospitalization rate. We do not have a regular, consistent, declining 14-day case rate. And we felt actually quite strongly, all of us who've been monitoring this for many weeks, that the indicators locally do not support a relaxation, particularly in the immediate kind of day after that the governor or two days after that the governor was proposing. So as you indicated, the governor and I will give him credit because not every governor in the country did so, but our governor has acknowledged that there may be differences at local levels that justify and support changes. So we have done so with a health order that indicated we would retain the current restrictions at least through Friday, May 15th. And that's where we are. We're going to keep looking at the data. We do want to let more activity happen when it is safe to do so. But we do not want to do that until it is safe to do so. So in the meantime, the next week, I'm sure we're continuing the restrictions on nonessential travel, on nonessential organizations and enterprises being open. That's, we're just keeping the status quo. Please keep the physical distancing, the masking when you're in public, stay six feet away from people if at all possible. Use personal hand washing and sanitizing practices that you've been doing. Don't go to work when you're sick and do only essential travel activities. That has helped us flatten the curve, protect our healthcare system. We've had a lot of good results, but we are not yet out of the woods. And we will continue to monitor that. I can let the council know that we will have a press conference at 1:15 on every Friday. Please tune into that if you want updates. And we do expect next week to be able to announce what the next steps are locally as we've set them through next Friday. I will also note the continuity of city government team continues to work on our city government. As you all know, we've stayed open through this whole crisis and pandemic. Kudos to all the workforce that do so, even in sometimes stressful times and situations. We will continue to operate. We will look at changes in facility access. I've indicated that nothing, we are not going to change facility access until May 18th at the earliest. Monday, the 18th, if the conditions suggest it should be done. We are starting to prepare for what might be reopening City Hall, what that would take, what form it would take, how employees would be protected, how the public would be protected. We continue to do lots of evaluations and planning for events and activities, programs, et cetera, from swimming pools to parades to other things, and we'll be sharing those decisions as they're made. Again, I thank everybody in our community who keeps things going. Please, you're welcome to reach out to us, but do know that the focus that we have right now is continuing to protect our healthcare system and the safety of all of our people. While we figure out how we can take the incremental steps over the weeks and months ahead that will let us do additional activities, commercial enterprises and such, while we continue to protect our health. An unbelievable number of people are helping make this community work. Thanks to everybody for that. I'm going to hand it over now to the two work groups again, which have been doing extraordinary work. Volunteers, dedicated, focused. First, let's hear from Beverly Calendar Anderson on the Social Services Group, which has worked so hard to stand up and protect the, the basic safety net during these challenges, and I can't thank them enough. And then after that, from Adam Crowley, who's helped the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Group, which also has done extraordinary work over the last six weeks or so. And I think we're going to be joined tonight by one member of that group too, Aaron Predmore, who can give an update on some of the forthcoming work to, to try to explore recovery. So thanks to everybody. I'll take questions at the appropriate time and I'll hand it over. Assuming that's okay, Mr. Volin to Ms. Calendar Anderson.
Yes, of course. Ms. Keller Anderson, welcome. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Volin and Mayor Hamilton. I'm going to be sharing my screen. So a short PowerPoint presentation.
They're also fancy and good. That's impressive.
Let's see. Okay. Wait a minute.
I see it.
Okay, it's kind of.
I don't know why they don't have a big press play button on PowerPoint. There should be a big press play button somewhere.
Okay, there it is.
There we go.
Okay, so the, I'm Beverly Calendar Anderson, Director of the Community and Family Resources Department. And I have been the liaison to the COVID-19 Social Services Working Group that's been meeting since about mid March, maybe. Yeah, let's see. It's hard to remember how long we've been meeting. But the members of the, I'm sorry. Oh, the members of the working group are John Barada with the Bloomington Health Foundation, Diane Buzel with IU Health Foundation, Ephraim Pfefferman with United Way of Monroe County, Tina Peterson with Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County, and Dan Smith with the Indiana University Foundation. So when the group first got together, they decided to focus on the four basic, four basic areas. And really the goal was so that the health safety, so that the safety net that we have here in Bloomington for our residents did not break and, and, and to see what we needed to do to keep that from happening. And so we focused on emergency food provision, an isolation shelter for persons experiencing homelessness, childcare for essential workers, and personal health and safety. And with emergency food provision, our food providers meet weekly to discuss challenges and needs. And truthfully, some of them have helped to resolve each other's needs as we talk through. Somebody might need boxes, somebody might need gloves, somebody might need, you know, other things or and, and so those things that we could resolve immediately, we have. Most of our food needs have been met through the traditional service providers and with the creation of new resources like the food train. The funding from the United Way's COVID-19 Emergency Fund helped to purchase additional food for agencies that needed it in order to, to make that happen. And one of the, the big issues that we found and one of the priorities that we're focusing on is to assure that providers have more than a two-week inventory. Right now, most people have a two-week inventory for the number of people they were serving prior to the pandemic. And so with the increase in needs, because every provider is saying they are seeing people that have never used their services before. So with that increase in need, they're needing to have more inventory additionally places like Community Kitchen because you can't come in and dine Community Kitchen. And, and I would also add to Lone Center to this, they are doing carryout. And so they're looking for provisions that are more portable to pass out to their clientele. The isolation shelter for persons experiencing homelessness, I think I have talked in this meeting before that that regional safe recovery site is up and running. It is fully staffed. We have the ability, they have the ability to house 58 guests. We serve a six-county region. So far, they have been averaging about one guest per week. And none of the, and I will say that the shelter is for folks who have tested COVID positive, who are awaiting test results or who, or who are symptomatic and have been told by a health professional that they need to isolate. And so far, they have averaged about one guest a week since it's opened. And I am happy to report that among our area shelters, there have been no COVID-19 positive test results. And we attribute that to education and prevention measures and good hygiene and, and folks are washing their hands and using sanitizer and that kind of thing. And Wheeler Mission provided some folks to be trained as peer mentors and they go out to the parks and, and pass out masks and hand sanitizer and educate their peers on good prevention measures. In childcare, that team performed a survey among companies with essential workers. And we had an estimate of the number of childcare spots that were going to be needed. They also surveyed childcare facilities to see who was able to stay open, what ages they were able to take, what the costs were. With that, three pods were created, three childcare pods, which would be able to provide childcare in small groups. So eight children to one to two adults in these small groups. And so one was created at Twin Lakes, one was created at Banneker Community Center, and one at the Boys and Girls Club in Ellisville. The Community Foundation has a staff that's serving as a navigator to help people in need of childcare services find the appropriate service, either through these new pods that were created or through existing childcare services. That person is also helping people who need scholarship assistance to find that. Our registrations were very low. Some of the thinking is that because a lot of businesses were closed or people were able to work from home, that they were doing their own childcare or by the time these opened, they had found other options. But we are thinking as we move forward and things are starting to open up again, that people will need more childcare again. And so, so now we're starting to look toward what does that mean for camps and summer camps and will there be needs among the, not only the essential workers, but, but all workers that are now going back to, back to their professions and their jobs. The personal health and safety, they're continuing to develop their priorities. They've met. We've talked about things like hygiene for people experiencing homelessness who are, you know, out and about, especially during the day with a lot of places closed down. We've looked at domestic violence issues that arise because, and maybe even child abuse, because people are home all day, every day when they haven't been before. And we've talked about other social service needs. So those priorities should be coming within the next week or so. And so that's what we've done to date and happy when Alex is done to take any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley.
Thanks, Beverly. I'm going to share my screen now. See if I can do this. Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes, it's looking good.
Great. Thanks. So Alex Crowley, Director, Economic Sustainable Development for the City of Bloomington. And I'm also very pleased to have Aaron Predmore join us today. She's the President and CEO of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce to talk about some of the reopening activities underway. So I'm going to fly through my part of it pretty quickly to give her maximum time to talk about what's going on right now. So as a reminder, the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Working Group involves this group here, including Councilmember Scambalory, who's been great on the team. And we're really, everybody's working very hard and really well together to advance the three-phased programs that we want to pursue, which is rapid response, the recovery, which is the reopening period and the long-term planning. I also wanted to recognize the advisory committee that was stood up very quickly. They are the ones, if you recall, who do a preliminary review of applications as they come across for the Rapid Response Fund loan program. This is the group and they are operating in the background and working diligently and, and doing a great job staging so that applications come across with ratings that then the city staff can make final determinations of. So I wanted to recognize their work and to thank them profusely for everything they've done so far. The program to date, daily counts, you've seen this chart before. It's been added to with recent dates. You'll see that there's a growing number of, of applications that have been started as well as submitted over time. We are processing as many as we can. There's still a difference between what's been processed and what's been submitted only because they keep coming in. So we are staging them through that advisor group that I just, just highlighted. There's still a pretty big discrepancy between what was started and what was submitted. And we're going to be pursuing some research with the group that just started their applications but didn't finish them to get an understanding of what it is that they intend to do and where potentially they ran into some issues, if that, if, if those issues caused them to, to stop the application process. So this is a snapshot as of today. You'll see across, you know, those pending submissions, but also what's been withdrawn, what's been submitted but not yet processed. The two that are circled are those that have been approved. In other words, selected for the award but not yet issued funding. And then the award is accepted is, is what we're tagging the group that has had funding issued. So you'll see one award was declined. I think I mentioned this before. They realized that they didn't need it and they asked us to, that they've actually returned the, 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 the money. So so this is the distribution as it stands today. So the commitments that we've made so far, if you look over all the way to the right, the total column, total funding committed is $1.187 million. And that is broken up between what's been approved and pending final agreements of 476,000 and then what has actually been spent, funded, I should say, which is 711,270. And you'll see the breakdown there between the food and beverage tax and the BUEA. So predominantly funded by food and beverage, but, but a fair amount covered by the BUEA. And again, the combination of the two has helped us cover businesses that might not have fallen under one or the other. So that combination was really helpful to us. So what you'll see is we've, we've, we're approaching that $1 million mark, which was that first tranche that we had discussed with you early on. It is our feeling that the ongoing situation may, may stimulate additional applications. So I think it's been prudent all around to have a second tranche waiting in the background. And we will of course, keep you updated as to how that progresses. At the bottom is the loan amounts in each category. So you can see approximately $27,611 average loan amount for, for all of, all of the applications that have been funded or, or approved. Concurrently, and Sean Starwitz is on the phone, so he can, or on the call, so he can answer some questions. But there is a Bloomington Arts Commission and BUEA combined grant program underway. Basically, that program has received applications already. They closed on May 4th. 10 applications per panelist will be reviewed during May 6th through 11th. And then you'll see here, as of May 15th, they will begin informing organizations of awards and start the dispersment process. I should also note the BUEA has allocated an additional $112,500 in emergency grant funds for Q3 and Q4 2020. So this is the first part of an operational program that will be supported later in the year. Everybody felt it was important not to lose sight of the fact that the second part of the year will be, will be probably painful for some of these organizations. I've included some very high-level demographics of, of the applications that have been submitted. I'll touch on these very quickly. They're in your packets and you can look at them more closely. And I'm happy to ask or answer any questions about them. We broke it up by ethnicity. So you'll see Hispanic, Latino versus not, and then race, where you have white versus Asian or Pacific Islander versus black versus other or no answer. So you'll see, you know, a fair, fair percentage of, of white applicants or non-Hispanic Latino applicants, which is not surprising given our demographics. But we do see that there is a, a, you know, reasonable amount of participation among non-white applicants. So that, that was encouraging. From a gender perspective, actually a, a strong female showing with about 48 and a half percent male and other and no answer breaking up that way. And then business demographics, this is where they, where the applicant is and can choose multiple options actually. So they are self-reporting what their business demographic is. And you'll see this breakdown. I won't go through all the details, but we are seeing pretty good distribution, which is good. And, and we like to see that. And we're pushing pretty hard to maximize that distribution. So before I turn it over to Aaron, you know, if anybody watching or listening wants to apply to the Rapid Response Fund, it's at bloomington.in.gov/business. And anyone can feel free to reach out to me directly at the contact information on the screen. Thank you very much for your time. I will turn it over to Aaron.
Mr. Predmore. Thank you very much for allowing me an opportunity to talk with you tonight. I'm going to share my screen. And you are here on my search bar. And so we're, I just wanted to highlight, if you go to Monroe County COVID-19.org, which is where we're going to go, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the reopening in the community and kind of how we're navigating this. and kind of how we're navigating this and where things are for individuals to find, to be able to, to get ready to open back up again. This is the website that the community kind of all put together. It's been in place, I don't know, Beverly couldn't remember how long they've been meeting. I guess March, I can't, it's all blending together now, but let's say six to eight weeks. We've got this here for lots of different, and information for people. Here at the bottom, we've got our Bloomington Back to Business tab. And we can click on that and go immediately to a new section of the website that we put together with different sources here available as well. So we've got some quick overviews and things like that. We realized a survey of businesses to ask what help they needed. And they both needed some just basic sort of things available to them to help them think through situations and also some specific things. The group that's working is part of the ESR group. We're a subset of that kind of taking this three to 12 months reopening and recovery time period to try to get things started again and make sure businesses are feeling comfortable about reopening and that also that our, their customers and our citizens here are feeling comfortable about going back out again. So finding a balance between those two things, both, both safety and that economic development. One of the things that has come out of our work is the ability for a business to request a tiger team. So for those who don't know, a tiger team is a ability, is a, sorry, a small group of experts that come together to solve a specific problem. And you can request, we've got about over 60 volunteers, many of whom are from Cook as managers and things like that, in different aspects of their work, along with another 20 or 25 from the broader community who have volunteered to come together and share their expertise with businesses who are trying to maybe figure out how to reimagine their retail space or solve a employee training issue or something to do with their facility, all sorts of things. So this tiger team is listening or has questions about that. They can make a tiger team request down on the bottom of this page. And we'll come, the email will be generated and then we'll share that with the tiger team, the whole list of volunteers to see who is the best ones that we need. So we're excited about that. We think that's going to be a really useful and quick, efficient way for businesses to get back to reopening and that recovery. And the other part of what we're doing, so that's that kind of one-on-one coaching and, and active help. But we realize that there's a lot of topics that we can cover remotely. And so we've got a Back to Business conference going on, just started today. And we've got two and a half weeks of virtual conference sessions planned. This right here is just the first week. Today we did HR and COVID-19, dues and dents. And then we also got some reopening updates from Penny Cottle over at the Monroe County Health Department, really just talking about business owners, business owners about their questions specific to their business and also just around things like temperature checks and customers or where, you know, questions about PPE or questions about the governor's order, things like that. So it was really helpful to have her available and we really appreciated that. Later in the week, you can see these are, we got some other topics coming this week. And then next week we'll have the registration open shortly for that too. This has also been a big project that I know I'm here to talk to you about it, but there's tons of people working on this. It's really been helpful to get those things done. The last thing before I get off of this is, I was going to show you, the other thing that goes, that continues to go on is we have primary elections coming up, as many of you know. And so I just want to let people know that we've got lots of information here for all the different people, about all the different candidates running. So if anybody who's listening needs to find out more about the different candidates, we've got some of that available as well to help share that information with the broader community. And then the last thing, we've got our, let's tackle now with the training and the tiger teams and all that sort of stuff. And then we've also got a section of our group that's working on what comes next. So not just are businesses ready to reopen, but then also revenue generation. And so we're looking for opportunities. One, one of the committee members, I believe it was Jane Cooper Smith, came up with a name SOS, Support. What is it? Summer of Support? Summer of Support, where we string together eight weeks of support for different sectors of our economy. And we're going to try to make a fun game out of it where people can enter. If they do X, Y, and Z, then they can submit. And then their name might be drawn for prizes and things like that. So fun ways to get people out of the house or maybe using online and carry out for a way to support some of our businesses locally, deal with the summer and a natural downturn in the calendar. And then on top of that, the pandemic. So those are the things that we've got going so far. And we will continue to come up with ideas. If anyone listening has ideas about how reopening needs to happen or some creative ways to, we were talking earlier today about, you know, Kirkwood and, you know, could we use some of the new renovations there to allow restaurants to serve outside of their restaurant space? They be outside so they could have more tables, ideas around parking, around signage, all sorts of things. So there's a lot of talk and we are happy to navigate through some of those things and try to pull those pieces together. So thank you very much.
Thank you to Ms. Predmore and Mr. Crowley and to Ms. Callender Anderson and to the mayor. Are there any questions for the report presented to us today from council members? If so, please show me Mr. Sims.
Thank you. I have one from Ms. Callender Anderson. During your presentation, and thank you very much, you and Alex and Erin for presenting. But I thought I had in, that I was thinking when you were presenting with regard to childcare. Are we having any social distancing issues with the children? How difficult is that or have we heard anything along those lines?
So I think, thank you, Councilmember Sims. That's one of the reasons the pod model was created because you don't have 20 kids in a, in a space. You may have eight. And then they all have their color-coded chairs and desks and pens and pencils so that nobody cross-contam, well hopefully, depends on if you're four or not, but nobody, hopefully nobody cross-contaminates by using other people's, you know, instruments. So yeah, so that's, that's how they're trying to handle that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for the presentation just made, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Callender Anderson. My question for you was if the general public wants to know about these pods and about the available childcare, how do, how do they inquire about that?
So if they want to know about the childcare specifically, if they're trying to find childcare, they should call the Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County. And so that's where the navigator is housed and they have all of the information about childcare. I don't have the number out with me, but it's the Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County.
Okay. And, and that is also for, everybody can try to access that. It's not just for essential workers at this point, correct?
Right. We started out with essential workers, but now it's, it's opening up.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and so the, and I was going to say the person there could always connect them directly to a childcare facility, depending on the age of the child and, and where you live and the other needs that they have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, Scambolari.
Thank you. This question's directed to Mr. Crowley and Ms. Predmore. I'm always interested in the context in which our financial support is being provided. And are there any updates you would share with us or anything you would like us to know about what's going on at the state and federal level? With any assistance they might provide and how our money fits into that?
I can start and then Erin, by all means, jump in. So, you know, I, I think what we're seeing from a applicant and general funding perspective is that there are people who have taken it, who jumped on, they were sophisticated. They jumped on the federal money. That money is in place, it's hitting. I think they are pleased with that. They also are becoming aware that that will have a limited timeframe associated with it. So there's going to be a natural question and tension as to will that, for example, the PPP carry them to a place where they have adequate revenue generation that allows them to actually sustain themselves beyond the expiration of that, if there's nothing else coming. And so we're seeing some applicants that are probably hedging against that and, and doing. And so our local funding fits in as a bridge, whether it was, you know, early on to that funding or potentially a bridge beyond that funding to a place where revenue generation becomes a little bit more robust, whether that's through a wider reopening or other creative ways to generate revenue. Then there's a whole other group and, and I'm somewhat surprised by the fact that there are a lot of organizations that, that simply were not sophisticated enough or did not jump on federal funding. And for those, local funding is desperately needed and appreciated to allow them to sustain because they kind of missed the boat frankly, on some of the CARES Act. So, so I think that that's mostly what we're seeing. So it is exactly as it was intended, which is it's really bridging for some people. And then, you know, for people getting federal funding, but it's also bridging for people who are not getting that funding to a place where potentially they can, they can get some revenue generated.
And if I can just add an interesting statistics about local businesses. In the survey I mentioned about pulling, I went so quickly through my presentation. I hope I said this. I did a survey and I got some information from our businesses about what training they needed in order to be ready to reopen. And as part of that, I also asked them how, who, if they had applied for help and if so, how much. And almost 30% of the respondents had not applied for any help, federal or local, credit, lines of credit or anything like that. So it is a different, I'm not sure why that is. That, that would be a follow-up question. The survey would be to say, okay, tell me more if you didn't, if you didn't do that. But I think Alex Wright is right. Some people, it, it is a, loans are a burden on a long-term, sort of in a long-term sort of way, in a risk. And so I wonder if there's something about that going on too, that we're just not quite sure what's going to happen next. And so bringing on more debt or more risk, that's kind of what I'm theorizing right now. But I'm, but I'm also not sure. So I'd have to come back with some more information to you about that stuff.
If, if I may just make a quick note to Ms. Scambolari's question, which I took also to refer, at least I heard it and maybe I wanted to hear it. But as public officials, I hope you will all, at every chance, emphasize the critical importance of federal support to state and local governments. All state and local governments are going to be really hurt and we can't operate at deficits. Federal government should and we hope will do some substantial support for local and state governments as we navigate through these months. It's really important that they do so.
Thank you. I'm not hearing anything that would suggest we need a course correction or we need to adjust strategy right now. I hope I'm reading that correctly, but I'm sure you'll keep us posted if we do. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Ms. Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to ask how the farmer's market went this past Saturday with the pre-orders and the pickups at showers common. Could somebody speak to that?
Sure, I can give you a quick update. We had over 600 customers. We had the largest volume yet this year of purchases. I understand the average visit was less than 15 minutes. The physical distancing worked well. Some of you may have been there. I personally was not there this past Saturday, but heard those reports. The orders are open. Working closely with the health department, actually the, the farmer's market team has now expanded the number to allow up to 1,000 customers to come. It was at 7:50 before, so they feel able to manage that, which is terrific. And we're going to continue to explore how we can enhance the farmer's market. But I think people felt very good about coming back downtown and that the walking pickup worked pretty well. If any of you want to report on that directly, I'd be happy to hear it too.
Did that answer your question?
Well, I've just, I've heard some, I didn't attend either on Saturday. I've just heard some concerns about allowing that many people to, to not really gather, but to be, you know, sequentially in the same place. Can somebody review the safety measures that are being enacted?
I can share some. Again, this is, and I would note, this is done in direct collaboration with the health department, which has approved all of the approaches to this. In fact, I would just note some have suggested it's actually safer than your average grocery store that you would go to in terms of protocols. They have a chute that you enter. People are assigned times to arrive over a multi-hour period based on the last name of their order. Their orders are pre-assembled by all the vendors. Each person has a space between them as they assemble to go through the, through the actual market itself. The market, you, you walk through one circuit. The vendors all are masked and gloved and using strong sanitizing approaches. You collect your items, you get through there and you're out. And I was told again, we had some people monitoring, the average visit was an 11-minute visit. We're certainly welcome if there are reports of concerns about that and we'll continue to monitor that. But from what I heard, it went, it went quite smoothly and they feel they can handle more people this coming Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from members? If not, I'll take one. Mr. Mayor, what, what is your take on this recently sent-in idea about letting restaurateurs seat people outside, maybe even into the street? If it means help, you know, keeping people separate but helping their business? Any thoughts about it?
Yeah, I mean, as, as Erin Predmore said, I think, I think this is a time for us to try to be flexible and creative and innovative as businesses are trying to recover. Certainly people have talked about creating more space along Kirkwood and other places for outdoor seating. I'm all ears for that. I think we should be listening to our, our commercial enterprises telling us what's it going to take to get going. We've, we may be looking at signage, we may be looking at parking, we may be looking at outdoor space. Obviously, losing a street from traffic and/or parking has impact. But in particular, if, if commercial enterprises along that place say, we'd really like to try this, I absolutely think we ought to be open to pilots and experimenting and seeing what works. So I'm all ears about that.
Thank you. Appreciate the answer. If there are no other questions from members, we will move on to our next agenda items.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you to the city staff who presented and to Ms. Predmore. We go now to council committees. I believe there is a report from Sustainable Development. Ms. Scambolari?
There is. Thank you. As a follow-up or an extension of the conversations we've had in council in the past and just as a way of keeping in touch with the business community, I extended an invitation on behalf of the Sustainable Development Committee and Council to wish a topic with downtown Bloomington, Inc. and the Convention Center, Mike McAfee of Visit Bloomington, Visit B Town and Mike Campbell of the CBC. And I believe they are with us. Mr. Lucas, I'm not sure if you can help them access us. I see Talisha.
It should all be here now.
Mike and Mike. Good.
I think we're all here.
So just as, as a report of sorts from us, I would turn it over to these leaders and let them share a bit about their perspective. Talisha, would you like to begin?
Yes, I think Mike Campbell.
I'll go ahead and start.
Yeah.
Mike Campbell, I'm the president. And the president of the Commission and Business Commission. And I wanted to give you, I wanted to start off with a status of where we are with in keepers tax collection for the current year. And then we'll turn it over to Mike McAfee and Talisha to wrap up with. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Have one.
Sorry, give us just a, just one second. We can enable that for you.
Okay.
You should be able to go ahead now.
Okay. Thank you very much. So you just a little bit about what the Commission and Business Commission and the in keepers taxes for. Starts this here. The CBC oversees the collection and distribution of the Monroe County in keepers tax. These are collected by lodging facilities and short-term rentals. And the uses of the in keepers tax are principally to promote tourism. So we do fund Visit Bloomington, which does tourism, marketing, leisure and otherwise. Also works with the convention, marketing, recruitment and providing incentives to have those conventions come to town and operates the Monroe County Visitor Center. We do support both operationally and through capital and maintenance fund for the convention center as well as fund the existing debt on the convention center and the surrounding land. Give you just briefly, and I'll spend most of my few minutes here, just to give you a basis of what historic collections have looked like over the last five years. Where we've averaged and increasingly grown tax collections from twenty-five million to two point eight. And we're anticipating moving to approximately two point nine million at the end of this year before, before March. And since that time, we've had several hotels closed. And those closed in March and have yet to reopen. And those that have remained open. We are anticipating forecasted tax collections approximately off by one million dollars. So from a two point nine million to a one point seven million dollar tax collection for the balance of twenty twenty. For the first of the year, which represented business in December, January and February, we were virtually on pace with where we were in twenty nineteen. And so all that shortfall will be from March forward. Also wanted to give you just some historical perspective. In the aftermath of nine eleven, in two thousand and one, tax collection dropped in Monroe County by about four percent. At the end of the financial crisis in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, tax collection for that whole year dropped in just six percent. And we are anticipating this year tax collection dropping forty-one percent. So this is really uncharted waters in the hospitality industry. We started when we had our first meeting after the governor's announcement in March. Met with, the CVC met with both Visit Bloomington and with the convention center management team and allocated funds and directed that we would prioritize really in three areas. We would work towards maintaining payroll. We would work towards maintaining utilities and the facility. And then also continuing to pay the convention center debt load. So, and we have been able to do that and anticipate being able to do that in balance of the year. I guess at that point, I'd like to turn it over to Mike McAfee, talk a little bit about how he's done a few of those things and, and what are we, what the goal is when, when business starts to resume. My last comment though, just to say, the reduced staffing levels are at a, it's not just the managers, general managers and level managers and some of those have been furloughed and some have been let go from their respective companies. But it's principally fewer rooms in the market means fewer rooms that housekeepers have to clean, fewer people that are checked in. And so the burden of this really has fallen on our workforce and our hospitality workforce in Monroe County, which is more in the brunt of it. So, Mike, can you talk a little bit about what you're doing?
I can. Thank you, Mike.
Sharing here.
I'm Mike McAfee. I'm the executive director at Visit Bloomington, the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Monroe County. And I've got, I've got good news and bad news. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a little bad news with you first. I, I feel like especially, I know the county council last week appreciated hearing some of these statistics. So I want to piggyback on what Mike Campbell just said somewhat. The last twenty-eight days, I'm talking about a twenty-eight day period here, right up until last Sunday night. The market continues to sell about four to five hundred hotel rooms every night and somewhere around a hundred and fifty Airbnb or short-term, short-term rentals. Total room sold in the market during that twenty-eight day period is down sixty-six percent versus the same time last year. Room, room revenue is down eighty-three percent during that time period. Average, average rate is down fifty-one percent during that time period. And as Mike alluded to, we've got about thirty-three percent of our rooms are closed or off the market right now out of about twenty-five hundred. Just to, just to put some, you know, the, the big, you know, we're riding graduation weekend would, would be upon us. And, and just, just so you know, the, the type of spending, I mean, we all know that that's a big deal, the type of spending that occurs in, in Bloomington during graduation weekend. Two million dollars would have been spent on lodging and about three million dollars would have been spent on food and beverages in, in Bloomington during that time period. So, so that's obviously a big hit. We'll see, we'll see what the impact is of that. But, you know, those, those are some sobering numbers. That's, that's pretty typical of what's happening across the country and the world right now. Most, most things are down, most, most tourism businesses down about seventy-five percent. I know about seventy-five percent of the hotel employees and restaurant employees in the state of Indiana have been either laid off or lost their jobs. That's, that's well over two hundred thousand people right there. You know, the good, the good news and what, and what Mike wanted to, me to talk to you about and, and obviously as we are, you know, where, where Bloomington is and, and the, and the way we've been positioned, you know, obviously, we're, I say it all the time, we are, we are one of the most recessions tough towns in the Midwest. Every college town is, you know, so much depends on, on, on when those students come back and, and when all of the activities around that happen. We, we hope just to, you know, as safely and as soon as possible. But, you know, that's, that's really where we'll be positioning ourselves is the fact that we are, you know, so close to Indianapolis and, and so close to other Evansville and some, some drive markets, Louisville, Cincinnati, places like that. That's, that's the way we've been marketing and positioning ourselves for years. So, so when things are safe and, and it's time to market to those communities, we will, we're saving every penny we have. We will be ready to do that. It'll be mostly starting off in, in Indianapolis with, we're close, it's, it's safe. Come, come down and, and go out to dinner and see a show, hopefully stay over. And again, all of this is when the community is ready to do that. We got a long time before that comes. We following your, your, you, you guys on all of that. But, so, so we know that once, once travel comes back, Bloomington will bounce back as quick as any market in, in the state of Indiana and certainly in the Midwest because of, because of the university and all that business. I, I did want to say too, sixty-eight hundred employees in the tourism industry in Monroe County. It brings in about four hundred and twenty million dollars a year. This happens to be May third through the tenth is National Tourism Week. Obviously, we're pretty sensitive about celebrating that. It's, it's a somber time, but we do want to point out that a lot of those people have lost their jobs. A lot of them are still working really hard right now, delivering food and, and working at hotels. So we just want to give a big shout out and thank you to them for making this such a great industry for our community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and I'll pick up from that. I'm Talisha with downtown Bloomington, Inc. And thank you for inviting us to tonight's meeting and your support of downtown and the work all the communities doing to pull together. You know, as we know, COVID nineteen has been devastating for downtown. We've got nine hundred businesses, thirteen thousand employees, ten thousand residents, all in that era, era, area. And it's an ecosystem built for touch and gathering. And so two months ago, it all shut down and it's been unbelievably tragic to individuals and businesses and attractions and cultural events. There were so many emotions with seeing revenue lost immediately. One of the businesses shared that he recognized the look of fear on one of the businesses faces with that revenue going away. You know, of course, there was grief and multiple decisions considering employees, safety, suspending expenses, facing multiple decisions with financing and how to move forward. So, you know, it's been an interesting, you know, last two months of dealing with so many things that are outside your control. So on behalf of DBI, I wanted to thank the, the city administration and mayor and the council, city council, county council for moving so quickly on that food and beverage funds for recovery to smart, support our tourism-related small businesses and attractions. It was a smart and very necessary use of funds. Thank goodness it was available. You know, the various forms of assistance from just being able to talk with somebody to that COVID nineteen website that the chamber hosted of having one source for health and social and economic that so many different organizations contributed to really, really helped to be able to refer people to one source of information. You know, especially the mayor's plan for the short-term and midterm and long-term recovery, that economic stabilization committee has just been invaluable. And so we look forward to helping that any way we can. Long-term recovery is like, really needs to be on everybody's minds. Anyway, several businesses moved quickly. You know, small businesses are pretty innovative. They moved to curbside pickup and delivery in the restaurants. Two shops began online shopping opportunities at Facebook Live events. Nonprofits began online fundraising campaigns just to stay afloat. And, you know, this revenue is great. It brings in some revenue. It's bare bones, small percentage compared to what their normal had been. But, you know, for like the shops, you know, only thirty percent of them were doing online shopping and knew that they needed to get that started for the future. So that's what they're asking for help with now. And, you know, getting delivery systems going has been a challenge. Doing shipping is a little bit of a challenge. But, you know, that's, it's going to be hard. And, you know, it's smart that the city's continuing to move forward on the Four Street Garage to get it open as soon as it possibly can. That's going to be so important to recovery. Appreciate that the Kirkwood Construction Project was expedited and it's scheduled to be completed in early June. So, you know, businesses now are starting to think about what reopening is going to look like and what it means. And there's anxiety with bringing back employee and keeping both employees and customers safe. You know, building customer trust with consistent safety protocols throughout the community is going to be really important. You know, sourcing and affording protection, you know, as the masks and sanitizer and creating new systems are all going to be costly. But there are several Zooms going on to discuss the multiple decisions that need to be made. Nationally, the Main Street Center, some information with us, you know, twenty-five percent of small businesses are report that they're at risk of closing, they're down for one or two months. And it jumps up to thirty-five percent at risk of closing if they're down for four to five months. So, you know, just that percent increases the longer it takes to open. But mostly important, it's the longer it takes to get people feeling comfortable with the idea of getting back out again. So it's got to be gradual. We've got to get people visualizing what it looks like when they go to different places, understanding protocols. We've got to be in touch with our community sentiment and reimagining our downtown and, and the businesses approaching work together. There'll be organizational shifts of how we work and communicate. And we've already formed a lot of new partners. Funds are probably going to be down for projects and events as local government and other businesses are facing shortfalls in revenue. But then there'll also be design shifts. Maybe it's hand washing stations on the sidewalks or obviously, it's going to be less space inside businesses, less density. You know, get people out. It's good to hear about the farmer's market, like starting to get people thinking about even just being kind of comfortable walking around the downtown. You know, I think probably special events will move to smaller niche events, you know, with Mike and travel, you know, probably more date trips and staycations. And, you know, all things local is good right now, regional visitors to downtown. You know, in the short term, people probably feel a little bit more comfortable with outdoor events than they do with indoor events. Online retail promotion and branding protocols and, you know, temporary opportunities to use streets to distance people. You know, maybe Sundays that are traditionally, or might be times to bring people down. But that whole economic vitality, I think it's got to be consistent protocols throughout the community that we all get on board with and build community and customer trust. There'll be some experimentation, see what works, what doesn't, thinking outside the box. Listening to our workers and how comfortable they feel. Definitely, you know, maybe, you know, foods, you know, that restaurants prepared to take home and make and, you know, who knows, it's all going to be all kinds of different things. Property owners maybe have to go to like a sale, a percent of sales agreements for a while. I know some have been good about deferring rent. And so we'll just have to see what the rest of the year looks like. Re-envisioning office spaces. But I, you know, support for our broken businesses and attractions is super important for keeping that, that stability in the downtown, people wanting to come back and, and support and participate. So, so I think everybody's anxious to get back open. We need to let people know it's going to look different and to be thoughtful and strategic in the approach. Obviously, understanding the safety guidelines and continuing conversations with our small businesses and residents, you know, hearing from customers what they want to see. So, you know, at the convention center, from that standpoint, March eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth, we lost almost all events for three months. And so now we're talking with groups of how their event could look in the fall. There's still some skittishness with that. So it's slow and work individually. Create the social distancing, you know, the masks, the temperature, the, the way food service is handled. But we want to be respectful of, of the community and, you know, do everything we can to get things back open.
Thank you very much. So, President, I'm not sure where we are on time, but.
It's time, it's time to move on, but if there are questions, I'll entertain them for a few minutes. Is there, are there members with questions for the presentation? I don't see any hands raising, but my screen is updating slowly.
I don't see any either, but Ms. Kopic, Mr. McAfee, Mr. Campbell, thank you for keeping us up to date.
Yeah, thank you for being so supportive of downtown and community.
It's been very sober information to hear, but we are glad you're here and, you know, we appreciate your efforts greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move now to reports from the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak tonight? If so, please use the raised hand function and Zoom or please type into the chat. I see at least one hand raised. Mr. Shelton?
Yes, good evening, Council. Jim Shelton, also from the Chamber of Commerce. But I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the CASA program. CASAs are volunteers who support children who are in the court system for abuse and neglect. They provide support to the children, advocate for them and ensure they remain at the forefront of the court proceedings and find a safe, permanent home as quickly as possible. CASA will be, is accepting applications for an upcoming training session. This session will run from June first to the twenty-fourth. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. This will be a virtual training with all sessions held on Zoom. And in fact, all interactions in the CASA program these days with the children, with service providers, or even with the courts are being done via Zoom. We are experiencing an increase in cases and expect to see this increase to continue. Right now, we have 49 children on our waiting list who need CASAs. So if anyone out there has ever considered getting involved, now's the time to act. Abused and neglected children in our community need a stable, caring adult on their side that they can trust. So to learn how you can change a child's life, please visit monroecountercasa.org/volunteer or call 812-333-2272 to get more information on how you can apply and become involved. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you in the public.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the council? If so, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Or please type into the chat that you would like to speak. We'll hold it open for another 15 seconds. Again, if you want to speak to the council, please use the raise hand function in Zoom as Mr. Shelton did, or type into the chat. Seeing no takers, we're gonna move on to our legislation for second reading resolutions. Who's parliamentarian?
I'm sorry, I was muted.
It's okay.
I move that Resolution 2006 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, we have to signify with a roll, a vote while online. But the clerk, please call the roll on introduction.
Councilmember Rollo? Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
That's nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
It was eight zero, but that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed. It was unanimous of the people who were in the room. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2006, 20-06 denouncing and condemning white nationalism and white supremacy. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution initiated and sponsored by Councilmember Sims and co-sponsored by all council members condemns white nationalism, white supremacy, bigotry, racism, and hatred while holding up values of kindness, peace, respect, inclusivity, and equity.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 2006 be adopted.
Second.
We have motion in a second. I believe this resolution is authored by Councilmember Sims. Mr. Sims, would you please walk us through it?
I will, thank you. And the first thing we'll do is we'll, I think it's important to read the resolution itself, and I do apologize that we don't, we're not able to put it up on the screen for the viewing public. So I would ask that you bear with me. Resolution 20-06 denouncing and condemning white nationalism and white supremacy. Whereas the city of Bloomington has a committed interest in promoting the health, safety, and inclusiveness of all community residents and has a responsibility to oppose and aid in eradicating systemic racism, racial bias, and racial animus. And whereas the practices and ideologies of white nationalism and white supremacy continue to be on the rise across the United States and the globe. And whereas national and local media detail multiple events daily related to racism and white supremacy across this nation and world. And whereas the Southern Poverty Law Center, the Anti-Defamation League, and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security have acknowledged the growing threat of white supremacy and ideologies, including the following statement by the Department of Homeland Security. Quote, "White supremists violent extremism." Thank you. "One type of racially and ethnically motivated violent extremism is one of the most potent forces driving domestic terrorism." And whereas white supremists and racists are emboldened by the words and actions of some of our national leaders and those targeting our communities through social media. And whereas white supremacy is a fallacious ideology focused on maintaining white political, economic, and demographic dominance. And such an ideology is incompatible with the committed goal of inclusion in the city of Bloomington. And whereas all racist hate groups have beliefs or practices that attack or malign an entire class of people, typically for their immutable characteristics. And whereas racist, homophobic, and other oppressive ideologies have a clear history of inspiring violence, it is important to call out groups or ideologies that demonize others while they work to stabilize a foothold in mainstream society. And whereas in 2019, according to national agencies who monitor hate groups across the United States, approximately 940 such groups were identified and tracked. And whereas the Indiana State Constitution states that "No law shall be passed restraining the free interchange of thought and opinions or restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject whatever. For the abuse of that right, every person shall be responsible." And whereas our history serves a critical role in our understanding of discrimination, it is therefore incumbent upon us to acknowledge our past history so we do not repeat it. And whereas in Resolution 19-17, which declared the second Monday in October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Bloomington, the city acknowledged our country's inhumane treatment of native peoples, including forceful dispossession of their homelands. And whereas lynchings and other acts of intimidation against Black Americans have occurred across the United States, including the state of Indiana, and were meant to enforce white supremacy by means of racial terrorism. And whereas the calls for the deportation of Japanese Americans following Pearl Harbor resulted in the forced relocation of these Americans to government incarceration camps with deplorable living conditions. And whereas in 1999, an avowed white supremacist embarked on a hate crime killing spree across Indiana and Illinois, resulting in the deaths of two members of racial and cultural minority groups, including an Indiana University Korean international student murdered near the Bloomington campus. And whereas our community response to the distribution of hate literature by the man who ultimately committed these murders was the formation of Bloomington United, a coalition of community members, nonprofit and social justice organization affiliates whose mission is to promote educational opportunities that affirm the value of all human beings, bridge the differences between people, and to resist and respond nonviolently to hate activity in our community. And whereas violent events, including a recent 2019 mass shooting in El Paso, Texas that targeted Latinos and resulted in 22 people dying, continue to be directly tied to white supremacy and racism. And whereas the history conjures painful memories and puts in perspective the trauma inflicted upon people of color and other harm it has caused to members of our community negatively affecting educational, economic, and social outcomes. And whereas Bloomington is proud of its motto that ours is a safe and civil city, but acknowledges that creating such a community requires constant work, awareness, communication, and a willingness to admit faults. And whereas, as documented in the City of Bloomington Comprehensive Plan, our community welcomes all. There is a multiplicity of nationalities, races, cultures, ethnicities, religions, abilities, ages, sexual orientations, gender identities, and economic statuses. We derive our strength from this diversity, which we celebrate and embrace and commit to ensuring the inequities of the past are not a part of our future. And whereas, one way the city acts to combat discrimination is through the Bloomington Human Rights Commission, which was created in 1970 by combining the Human Relations Commission and the Fair Housing Commission. And through this commission and other city programs, the city strives to be a city without discrimination and racial animus. And whereas the city of Bloomington condemns all forms of bigotry, racism, and hatred, the city proudly stands for individual dignity and against all those who would seek to propagate hate, fear, and intimidation, or incite fear and violence targeting any human being. And now, therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, that the city of Bloomington denounces and condemns hate based on racial, social, and cultural bias and holds up values of peace, respect, inclusivity, and equity. The city is committed to continue pursuing policies and directing appropriate resources to ensure civil and human rights are protected and afforded to all individuals. May I continue, Mr. President?
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Are there, oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was, the screen went away.
That's all right. May I continue?
Yeah, of course. Absolutely. Please.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, of course.
Thank you very much. That was the resolution and my brief comments in support of that. It was my pleasure to sponsor this resolution. And I wanna thank all my council colleagues for their unanimous support as co-sponsors of this resolution. That appreciation includes all input that was offered by my colleagues. And I think this sends a strong message of solidarity between us and the city members in this community on denouncing these ideologies. Now, how did we arrive to this point? First of all, I think me as a city council member and many of my colleagues, our constituents, ask us to do and consider many things. Over the years, I have informally discussed many aspects, some of which ended up leading to, why doesn't Bloomington have such a resolution? I also want to thank and include, and I won't mention names tonight, but I think this is important. About eight weeks ago or so, we started drafting this resolution and doing research. And one of the community advocates that reached out with some help as far as what was happening from a resolution standpoint in other cities was Abby Aing. I just want to offer her my undying gratitude. I also wanna thank council staff, in particularly Mr. I'm sorry. I drew a blank there. But our council staff and the folks who did the research and edited this draft, I think we had three different edits before we arrived here tonight. I also wanna thank the mayor's office, relevant city staff and departments, members of boards and commissions who advocate social justice. I wanna thank other community advocacy organizations that support social justice. I wanna thank many of the community leaders that we reached out to in order to get their input to make this a community-based document. This resolution is a culmination of broad reaching out throughout this community and in seeking their community input. Now, the intent behind this resolution are several. One, I think it's important that we officially reflect our community values and let all those who visit, live here, or are passing through understand that that value against discrimination, violence, and hatred is not something that we wish to tolerate in our community. There is also historical context, as you heard through the draft of this document. The intent also is that this resolution becomes a living document. The way for a written piece of paper that have, will be adopted by us this evening, I hope. In order for that to become a living document, I think it has to be internalized. I think there has to be belief in the principles and there has to be actions that support those principles and how we treat one another fairly and equitably. Another intent is we now have an official resolution that sets an official city position that is supported by city government and the will of this community. I want to caution folks that this is not a comprehensive catalog of all the social ills in which we discuss and deal with in this community. It is, however, hoped to inspire thought, community conversation, and actions that will support the fair and equitable treatment of our fellow humans. I also think that this will galvanize, that this is the right thing to do regarding our fellow humans and humanity on the whole. That we seek fairness, equity, justice, nondiscrimination as we practice and live together for everyone. Thank you all so very much. And I will take any questions if there's any.
Are there questions for Councilmember Sims? I don't see any hands raised. Am I missing anybody?
Two.
Seeing none. Oh, there's Scamblerie.
It just occurred to me, this is a time for questions, and I was simply gonna offer my thanks to Councilmember Sims for the good work he has done in his draft.
Okay, thank you. I'm not so sure. We may refer to the parliamentarian, but I think there'll be council comments as we move.
In just a minute.
Right.
Right. I would like to move amendment. Thank you. Yes, I would like to move amendment one.
Second.
Thank you. It's a very small omission that I wanted to get in here. I wanted to actually put the name of Won Jun Yoon into the, the resolution. He is the man who was shot and killed in a racist act in 1999. And he was from Korea and he was killed in front of the Korean United Methodist Church on Third Street, which is on the other side of the street from the IU campus. And I just thought those small details were important to add. So that's all I'm asking for. I just wanna say that hearing the resolution read out loud again really impressed me in a way that reading it alone did not. It didn't, I mean, it just, it's a very powerful document that I am very pleased to be a co-sponsor of, and I'm sorry that this change has come so late. If there are any questions, I'd love to entertain them. I can't see anybody on the screen at once, so maybe you should speak up if you have a question. If not, we'll go to the public for comments on amendment one. And by the way, just to point to council staff, this is a scrupulous error. It should say Resolution 2006 shall be amended. It says 2001.
Just noted.
So
And, and
Make sure that the amendment.
Yes, I just noticed that error. And for any members of the public, this amendment was drafted pretty late in the day. It's available along with the resolution itself under the Medians and Documents tab on the city council page. So for anybody that wants to take a look at that, it's available on the city website, on the council page. If there are any members of the public that wanna speak to amendment one, they can use the raise hand function in Zoom or send a chat. Either one will Either one will work.
We'll hold it open for 15 seconds. Again, if you would like to speak to Amendment one to Resolution 2006, please raise your hand in the chat, or please raise your hand or type into the chat. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not for Amendment one, no.
Okay. Coming back, are there any comments on Amendment one? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
I just wanted to add that this happened on July 4th, our nation's national holiday, celebrating all the things that are good about the United States of America, including diversity, where I would put that towards the top. And then this terrible murder happened on that day. I remember I was coming back from the fireworks at Memorial Stadium, and the road was all blocked off. And I just wanted to throw that detail out there. I appreciate the amendment. I mean, I think the resolution was very strong as is, but this is just a little tweak that is a good one, I think.
Thank you. Further comments from members on Amendment one? I do recall where I was too when I heard that news. Councilmember Smith? Are you muted, sir? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
I just wanted to express my appreciation to Councilmember Sims for all his hard work and for helping craft and bring forth an excellent resolution. It's really important for us to put forth that it represents what we in Bloomington and we at the city believe. So, thank you.
Thank you. We are in Amendment one. We will have a chance to comment on the resolution after the amendment is taken up. I was just going to say that I was living in the neighborhood right across the street from the church when it happened. And the outpouring of the community that of grief was a significant part of the city's history, I think. And it did lead to Bloomington United. And I think in a way that hadn't happened before, it caused the city to formally begin to address the problems that have led to this resolution. So again, a small tweak, but one that I appreciate, Councilmember Sims, being willing to support. With that, if there's no objection, we'll call for a vote on Amendment one. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Scandallary?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that 8-0 or 9-0? Is everybody here?
That's nine.
Okay, good. Thank you. We now go to the amendment or to the resolution as amended. Are there any questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for a comment on Resolution 2006 as amended. Again, if you would like to address this resolution, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the Zoom chat box. Now would be a good time. Mr. Lucas will acknowledge you if you speak up in this way. Hold up another 15 seconds or so. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to Resolution 2006, please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Seeing no takers, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on Resolution 2006? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I appreciate the amendment as well. I think we've all thought about where we were on that evening in 1999. And I was singing in the Bloomington Pops Orchestra Chorus during the picnic with the Pops. It was an annual Fourth of July event, and I just remember how stunned everyone that was a part of that production felt on that day. It was absolutely unforgettable. And then being so proud of this community in the way it responded to the tragedy in a way that brought Bloomington together in the very famous Bloomington United. So the resolution is eloquent. It speaks for itself. I do thank Councilmember Sims and everyone who was responsible for the drafts. And it speaks for itself and for the city of Bloomington and the document that we can be proud of going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Sims, do you want to have the last word, or can I go to other members first?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members who'd like to speak? Councilmember Rallo?
I want to express my gratitude to Councilmember Sims, and just wanted to add that as the resolution refers to, I think it's really, it's even more important to have this resolution today because of the rise of hate groups and the unfortunate occurrence that usually during times of economic distress, people are vulnerable to hate rhetoric and racism. And it's even ever more important that we take a stand as a community in defiance of that. And this resolution is an excellent step in that direction. So, thank you, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Any other members like to speak to the resolution? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, thanks. I first wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Sims, as everyone else has, for ushering in this important resolution. I'm glad we're following in the footsteps of so many cities across the country to denounce and condemn white nationalism and white supremacy. I think this is a good first step in a multi-set process to hopefully rid our city and our systems and our policies of racism and to create a truly inclusive city. But I do want to add something. As important as I think this resolution is, simply saying we want to denounce and condemn white nationalism and white supremacy does not make it so. There's so much more that we need to do. And like Councilmember Sims says, we have to take action. We have to act. This city, with all cities across the US, has policies in place that perpetuate systemic and institutional racism. And we have to take a hard look at these policies and make changes. Single-family zoning, for example, is an example of a policy rooted in systemic racism. This truth can be difficult for people to grasp. We've all grown up with single-family zoning. We've all probably lived in neighborhoods that have single-family zoning. But for that reason, I want to read a quick paragraph from Richard Rothstein's book, The Color of Law: A Forgotten History of How Our Government Segregated America. He's the leading scholar on this topic, and his book forces us to face the obligation to remedy our past. So he says, "To prevent lower-income African-Americans from living in neighborhoods where middle-class whites resided, local and federal officials began in the 1910s to promote zoning ordinances to reserve middle-class neighborhoods for single-family homes that lower-income families of all races could not afford. Certainly, an important and perhaps primary motivation of zoning rules that kept apartment buildings out of single-family neighborhoods was a social class elitism that was not itself racially biased. But there was also enough open racial intent behind exclusionary zoning that is integral to the story of de jure segregation. So in 2019, the administration delivered an updated Unified Development Ordinance to council. And in that ordinance, single-family zoning was removed from our city. But the council did not pass that UDO. The council amended the UDO to continue single-family zoning in our city. So here, we had an opportunity to remove a policy rooted in systemic racism, and we did not take it. And here's the thing, righting things wrong is not always going to be easy. It's not going to be comfortable, and it surely is not going to be popular. But we have an obligation to do the right thing. I am excited, and I hope this resolution and council support of nine to zero is a glimpse of what is to come. And that when we again have an opportunity placed before council, we can vote nine to zero to act on the resolution that we passed tonight. Thank you."
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Further debate from councilmembers? Anyone else have comment? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Councilmember Sims for his leadership on this issue. And I know that he worked closely with Stephen Lucas of the council staff to draft this, and it's extremely well researched, well-written. For anybody who knows me, they know that I'm a meticulous editor, and I didn't see a single error in it. So this is awesome. But more importantly than that, it really comprehensively spells out what we stand for and why we feel like the diversity of races and ethnicities and all types of people in our community is what makes us stronger and what makes us a great place to live here in Bloomington. So, thank you very much for your work on this. Thank you to the community members who helped as well. I agree with Councilmember Rallo that, you know, in times of crisis, often the ugly side of humanity and the scapegoating and the fear that drives racism comes to the surface. And so I think it's particularly important for us to stand up for the rights of everybody and against any hatred during the pandemic, because it's a time of anger that often brings out hatred in people. And we will not accept that as a community. I agree with Councilmember Sims and with Councilmember Rosenbarger and others that this needs to be followed by action. And often, the actions are not really blatant. It's like, we don't make laws saying we are, you're going to jail because you're a racist. We don't make laws like that. But we have more subtle ways in which we can erase the historic and systematic racism that is part of American society, and we need to keep doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes. Thank you very much to Councilmember Sims for leading this effort and to other council members and community members who worked on this important resolution. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor and certainly share in the council's unequivocal condemnation of all forms of bigotry, racism, and hatred. I also want to echo Councilmember Sims's intent that this resolution be a living document and inspire action, legislative actions by this body, actions by the city's, the city administration, and actions by community members to move Bloomington towards a more just and equitable future. And while the entire resolution is very important, and indeed, like Councilmember Sandberg said, speaks for itself, I did want to take the opportunity to briefly highlight a couple of portions. First, that we, as a city, have a responsibility to oppose and aid in eradicating not only racial animus, which is vital, but also racial bias in all forms of systemic racism. That is racism that operates through our public policies, our institutions, and all aspects of our society. This resolution also acknowledges that this requires constant work, work that is nowhere close to done. Structural racism and discrimination are very deep-rooted in our country, in our state, and in our city, and we must work actively to dismantle these structures. Persistent systems of racism, discrimination, and exclusion exist in our current housing policies, land use policies, transportation policies, and our criminal justice system, our educational system, and our public health system, and more. And I want to highlight these issues specifically because I think for too many of us, it is easy to lose sight of these underlying systems of oppression. When the overt discrimination of avowed white supremacists is not front and center, it can be too easy for those who are not in the marginalized group to forget that we still live with systemic and structural racism and discrimination all around us. These issues are present in Bloomington today, and it's part of our job to dismantle these systems and to do our research and to learn and understand how particular criminal justice or housing or transportation policies perpetuate racial and other disparities in our city. So the work of dismantling white supremacy, systemic racism, and all forms of oppression is always vital work. And I think we're being reminded of this, honestly, right now in the context of the COVID-19 crisis. Underlying racial disparities in public health and socioeconomics, which are a result of systemic racism and racist public policy, are leaving those in the black community, especially a hard hit by this virus in the US today. So in the context of this resolution, I just wanted to acknowledge the difficult work ahead in dismantling the systemic inequalities that currently exist in Bloomington, in addition to actively combating, of course, all forms of overt racism and bigotry. So thank you, thank you again to Councilmember Sims and all the other council members for your work on this resolution. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other final comments? If not, I'll take my chance of four. Councilmember Sims has the last word. I was just going to say that we, as a community, didn't think that we needed to make such a statement explicit for too long. We live in a time now that has forced us to recognize that we have always needed to make such statements explicit. We could have declared independence as a country without a document, but we all recognize the importance of the written document that declared independence, whose words we refer to to this day. We know that laws, from the Constitution on down to the ones that we write, would not be enforceable without being committed to writing. Our original sin of good intentions is assuming that the right thing should be obvious and to go without saying. And so it goes with a resolution like this, which makes the intent of our community manifest. And it lays the foundation for the action that Councilmember Sims and Rosenbarger, among others, say correctly, must follow. So I support this resolution, and I hope everyone else will too. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank everyone for their cosponsorship and support of this. And I also want to thank Councilmember Pete Mon Smith for bringing back to memory Mr. Stephen Lucas, who I drew a blank on earlier. He is very, very instrumental in the research and on some of the editing. And he and I worked together, along with others. So I just want to make sure that he is recognized for the abilities and all the help that he provided. I heard other comments earlier. I do remember, my wife and I were on vacation in New Orleans, and I think that was 2004, I believe that was a year. And I was watching TV, and then I looked up, and Mayor John Fernandez was on the television. So, you know, I didn't think anything of it. I'm from Bloomington. Then all of a sudden, I'm like, I'm in New Orleans. What's he doing on the TV? And as I listened to it, it was announcing the shooting of Mr. Won Jun Yoon, and I hope I got that correct. And Mr. Ricky Bertson on up the road in Illinois by Mr. Benjamin Smith, I believe, was the white supremacist person's name. And that just lets you know how widespread those acts can travel and what they mean to certain communities across this country. On Monday, I participated in another Zoom meeting. And this was sponsored or hosted by Ms. Lisa Marie Napoli and Mark Frayley, who are professors in the PACE program, Political and Community Engagement. They're professors at Indiana University, and they were joined by Mr. Doug Bowder. And there were many, many community members present. And it was a program called Community Weavers. And we were able to break down into small groups and have some discussion on some of the systemic ills, entertain questions such as the term that we're going through this pandemic. entertain questions such as the term that we're going through this pandemic, we're all in this together. What does that mean to different people and to different groups and to whatever your positions are? So I think this resolution, along with a, a community conversations, such as Community Weavers, is just like I do believe Councilmember Flaherty stated, is a step toward that direction and to make some hard choices as we move forward. It's going to take courage for us and dismantling our historic and systemic racist practices and inequalities in our system. It, it's a must. It has to happen. And at some point, I believe this resolution is a good start toward getting there. So I was very, very encouraged to hear my colleagues speak on that and to echo my call to action. This will take policy changes. What we're talking about is policy changing, not only locally, but the state and throughout the country. And the last thing I will leave you with, just got another note from another very strong community person. And they want us to, to remember that we don't want to overlook what's happening today while we're trying to fix yesterday. Thank you all very much. And I am now complete, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. With that, we will, I will call for a vote on Resolution 2006 as amended. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Thank you.
The resolution passes nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you all.
We will move now to legislation for first reading. Will the parliamentarian please read?
Yes, Mr. President. I move that the clerk introduce and read appropriation ordinance 2002 by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on introduction?
This is for appropriation ordinance 2002?
Yes.
To be introduced, yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith. Smith.
Pardon me. Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's nine zero. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis only?
Appropriation ordinance 2002 to specially appropriate from the local income tax special distribution fund, motor vehicle highway fund, motor vehicle highway restricted fund, and cumulative capital development fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates an additional $900,000 from the local income tax special distribution fund transfers $1,731,205 from the local motor vehicle highway fund to the restricted motor vehicle highway fund and transfers $386,000 from classification to supplies to classification for capital outlays in the cumulative capital development fund. The appropriation of the $900,000 will be used for part of the end-out local match for the Serra Road multi-use path and intersection improvement project. The transfer of $386,000 will be used for the College Mall Road paving project. Transfer of $1,731,205 from the NVH to the NVH Restricted Fund is the result of a state examiner directive which implements House Enrolled Act 1002, 2017, and House Enrolled Act 1290, 2018. These acts restrict local use of at least 50% of the distributions from the state motor vehicle account for the construction, reconstruction, and preservation of highways. The state examiner directive requires counties, cities, and towns to, to create this new NVH restricted sub-fund to better manage and account for these statutorily, statutorily restricted funds.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2008 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Lucas.
Sorry to interrupt.
Concerned?
The appropriation ordinance that was just introduced was referred by the president to one of the council's standing committees, but now would be the time.
Oh, I forgot about that. Yeah.
There's no action needed if the council is fine with that referral, but now would be the time if, if anyone had a different referral motion in mind to make that.
I'm, I was referring to the administration committee.
Transportation.
Yes, transportation for the appropriate.
The first one? Was it, was it transportation? I'm sorry, I got the two mixed up. Sorry, this is going to transportation. Okay, shall we go on to the next man, parliamentarian?
Yes.
Unless there is, I didn't see. Go ahead.
Mr. President.
I'm just going to say, I think it's been.
We had a motion in the second of the table already.
Yes.
Yeah. We need a vote on whether to introduce that second piece of legislation. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
Sims.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, will the clerk please read by title and synopsis only?
Yes, ordinance 2008 and ordinance to amend ordinance 1921, which fixes salaries for appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the city for the year 2020, regarding added position, adding a position in the Information and Technology Services Department and changing the title in one position and the grade in another position for two divisions within the police department. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 1921, which fixes salaries for certain employees for the year 2020. The ordinance makes changes for two positions in two divisions within the police department and adds one position within the Information and Technology Services Department.
Thank you. And I have referred this to the administration committee, not the other one. Are there any other motions on the table?
I think we need to, we need to have a motion to actually refer these items to the appropriate committee and on a certain date and report back, right?
If, if I recall correctly, Mr. Lucas, are we just doing the committee or we have to refer to a time as well?
No. So at its meeting on March the 4th, the council by motion suspended the rules to give the president a little bit more flexibility and authority to, to schedule these matters. So as president, Councilmember Volin has made a referral already. There's no further motion needed, and he's got the authority to schedule those committee meetings.
And I had, go ahead.
Sorry. If, if anyone else had a, a different standing committee that they thought these matters should be referred to, or if they thought the, the legislation should be referred to the committee of the whole, now is the time to make that motion. And a motion for a referral in that case should include a, a specific time if, if one is known. But again, I think the, the council has given council, or the president authority to schedule those matters while we work through this first year of, of standing committees. So.
Thank you.
Just as, by the way, I was going to schedule the admin committee for, I believe, 6:30, and then the transportation committee at 7:00, because we expect that the administration committee's work will take very little time. So that was my intent. Is there any other motion? Seeing none.
But did you mention a date?
Sorry.
Did you mention a date that?
For next, next week, next week. I'm sorry. I took that for granted. It's committee, committee week.
Thank you.
Still finding my feet here. Thank you. We'll go now to additional public comment. 25 minutes set aside. Is there a member of the public who'd like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda already? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Again, if you want to make a public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda that we haven't already discussed, please type into the chat or use the raise hand function in your Zoom app. Seeing no further takers, we'll go now to issues of council schedule. Who's taking this? Mr. Lucas or Mr. Sherman? Do we have any schedule issues?
No, I can mention a few items. There is a scheduled council work session this Friday at 12:00 noon. And we just wanted to get a sense of how many councilmembers might be able to attend that. The only item that would be ready for discussion, I believe, is the update to the SHARD. And you'd be hearing from, I believe, Connor Herterich from, from the Hand Department. So perhaps by show of hands, you could indicate if you'd be able to attend that work session so we can decide whether to hold that. I'm seeing. Oh, wow. Okay. I see eight yeses and one maybe. So we will.
And a shrug.
It's a shrug. So we'll proceed with that work session as scheduled. And I believe that's the only item. I did want to note that the appropriation ordinance that was just referred to the transportation committee, while that committee has two sessions to report back to the full council, there is a noticed public hearing that the council will have to have on May the 20th. So it's possible that the committee will be able to report back and, and the council may be ready to act on that day. But at the very least, due to the, the notice requirements that go along with that appropriation ordinance, the Controller's Office had to go ahead and, and notice a public hearing for that date. So at the very least, the council will be hearing from the public on May the 20th on that item. And that, those are the council scheduling matters.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Scambalory.
Yes, thank you. Could you, Mr. President, go over the scheduling again for committees next week? Is it your plan to have ordinance 2008 be the only thing the administration committee deals with next week? Is allowing a half hour for that meeting?
Correct. We expected it to not be complicated. We wanted to make sure there was a little bit of time in case there was any concern that arose during its presentation. But it also allows the transportation committee to take a little bit more time to consider appropriation ordinance 2002. So, because they would follow the very brief.
I understand that. I just wondered. Yeah, I just wondered if there were any other agenda items on deck for administration. A half hour didn't seem like enough.
I see what you mean. I mean, there could be, but for now, we, we hadn't planned anything else. So.
Okay, that's fine.
You'll forgive me for making it a very short meeting, but I hope that, again, the, the other thing to remember is that Wednesday nights by local code are for items referred to committee as opposed to items that the committee might take up on its own. So it's not that the committee couldn't also take up items on a Wednesday night, but that was the idea, that we reserve Wednesday nights where legislation referred to committee, whether of the whole or standing.
Thank you.
And I finally just want to apologize because I have a feeling that, and I hope you could speak for me, the rest of you, that my internet connection is not the greatest because many people have been glitching this whole night. And I'm going to work earnestly to make sure that my internet is stronger for meetings to come in case I've been the source of many pauses and glitches tonight. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Is adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Good night. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.